Okay, we're going to call the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, November 14th to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Okay, Jackie, roll call?
Chair Clowitter, Vice Chair Mamdab Akar.
Here.
Commissioner Crapman. Commissioner McMorris.
Here.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel 3 and on the city online platforms. Okay, our public comment period, this is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda for tonight, but are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda, but we will hear you. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a speaker card, and that is available on the back table. That also goes for any of the items we're going to hear tonight. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the recording secretary, which is Jackie up front here, and speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak, so three minutes goes fast. You need to be aware of that. Okay, our consent calendar.
Yes, Chairman, if I may?
I think you said something already.
Yes, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, staff would just like to point out a couple of housekeeping items. Firstly, on page four of the agenda, item 4A, first item being the applicant is identified as Alex Nuyen. On the original application of that item, the applicant was Alex, however, since then the business owner Hong Vo has clarified that she will be representing herself. And also, there is a typographical error that under recommendation it states approving, but the recommendation this evening is a denial, so staff wanted to point that out.
Sorry, where is that?
That's on page four. Item 4A. Of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Where was it? Yeah. That's why I'm not finding it. Okay. Gotcha. Thanks.
And the second item for this evening for the agenda order, if the Planning Commission is amenable to it, staff is recommending that public hearing item 4C, the Zone Tax Amendment, be heard ahead of item 4B, which is the board game application for 1381 East Las Tunas Drive. The reason for this being Vice Chair Mamdab Akar has shared with staff that he does own property within the noticing radius and will have to recuse himself for that public hearing item. However, the agenda order is up to the commission, but that is staff's recommendation for this evening.
That's fine. Anybody have a problem with that on the commission? Nope. Okay, good. Let's get to the approval of the minutes. Has everybody reviewed the minutes? And do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, motion to approve.
Okay, second? Anybody? I'll second. Okay, Jackie.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Commissioner Crapman.
Upstate.
Vice Chair Mamdab Akar.
Yes.
And Chair Clowitter.
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is four to zero. Motion carry.
Very good. Okay, let's see, let's go to staff item number three. Help me if I missed the order after you did mention that. Item number three is the street name change guidelines, and who's handling this one?
That would be Director Aldo Sivantes.
Aldo, you've got the floor?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize for not being there in person, and I hope I am coming in loud and clear this evening. If I can just get a thumbs up, I can see you all on YouTube channel.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Sounds good, thank you, Chair. So, good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This item comes before you tonight upon direction of the City Council. The City Council has requested feedback and comments with regards to a proposed street name change guideline. The attached guidelines to the staff report have been presented to the HIR Commission as well as the Historic Preservation Commission as well. Both groups share very similar comments, which are included in the staff report. The guidelines have also been reviewed by Public Safety Staff, Public Works, as well as our City Attorney's Office. Once I collect the Planning Commission's comments and feedback, I will proceed with presenting the, all of the comments from all commissions to the City Council at a scheduled December 20th City Council meeting. While most of these sections within the guidelines are standard Public Works conditions, section four of the guidelines address street naming procedures. This section also includes language to address any historic standards with respect to street naming. Staff request the Planning Commission provide feedback and comments with regards to the guidelines and the application. But before I conclude, it is worth noting that this item tonight is not intended to discuss any pending applications for a street name change. The background within the staff report was intended just to provide some guidance as to a prior application, but we are not discussing that application tonight. This is merely a request of staff and the City Council for the Planning Commission to provide comments and feedback with respect to the guidelines and the application. And so this concludes my report, and I open for questions and comments.
Okay, thanks, Aldo. Kind of threw me off there since you're not here. So, if there's anybody who wants to come forward and make a comment on this, now would be the time to do it. Otherwise, we're going to move on and open this up for commission discussion. Okay, we're going to close the comment and open it up for Commissioner. Does anybody want to jump off here? Anok?
All right, I guess I'll start.
You look anxious.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank staff for giving me some of the feedback. Some of my comments were initially about building and safety, if we had the means to be able to do the name changes for our permits. Staff said they have the means to be able to do that change. Another comment I had was utilities and notifying other agencies. Again, I was told that Public Works would take the lead for that, so again, thank you to staff for providing that comment. Another question I did have was, let's say hypothetically, we use Delmar Avenue as a name, if someone wanted to do a name change, or we wanted to do name changes to it, is it possible to segment, let's say, the full Delmar between Long Den to the 10 freeway into four different names, let's say, Washington, Lincoln, Martin Luther King, Caesar Chavez? Would that be something that would have to be, would be considered segments or lengths of a street to be named? So that would be my feedback, like, which type of streets would be considered? Means again, Delmar does get used by the 10 freeway as an exit. How would that be considered as part of the name changes? Another comment I had was community input, and maybe asking that if we are doing a name change, that you get a signatures, let's say, in our city, maybe 2,000 signatures to say, hey, we have community backing in this name change? That would be very important for me, as long as the community is aware of it, rather than just a small segment of people only knowing about these type of changes. And of course, I'm glad that HIR Commission and Cultural Historical Commission both had input towards this name change, as any name changes from here on out does fall, I believe, under their purview of historical as well as cultural recommendations. Thank you, staff. Those are my few comments.
Okay, very good. Jerry, you want to weigh in on this one?
Yeah, well, I have a question first, but I will. There is a filing fee section of the staff report, and the HIR Commission suggested increasing the fee. So my question is, is the filing fee section what is currently there, or is it what the HIR Commission is recommending?
The fee that's addressed in the staff report is a fee that was discussed early on with the Public Works Director. We find that the fee, which is a little over $700 plus a $1,000 deposit, is well within the range to cover costs in terms of staff time as well as materials and supplies. And so that fee in respect to how we feel the cost of service is going to be reflected on a project like this is going to be appropriate for this level of project. I know that the HIR Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission, both would like to see the fee increased for purposes of trying to sort of detract from applications. Unfortunately, we cannot increase the fee in that sort of manner, as the fees are intended to cover costs of staff time and materials. And the fee that's been addressed in the report, myself as well as the Public Works Director find to be adequate to cover costs.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it. You know, this is an interesting thing. As you point out, it doesn't happen very much, and from that standpoint, I think staff has, you all have done a good job of presenting this, and I'm pretty comfortable with the process and the fee, the fee that's involved, so I'm prepared to, on my part at least, go forward with the recommendation to the council.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Sean?
Hi, yes. Hey, yeah, thank you to staff for preparing the background on this. I do think this is a rather unusual, I guess, process or request, so I do have a couple of questions and some recommendations. I agree that with the purpose on page one of the guidelines, that it should be unique historical geographic and cultural characteristics should be considered, as well as the quick and efficient delivery of emergency services, goods, services, and mail. We all know if you change your street name, your mailing address changes. So, and then I see the guidelines and names. Again, they emphasize distinct social, historical, geographical, cultural characteristics, a community's evolution. My question is, so, two primary questions on this is, I didn't see anywhere in the application process that the person or group applying for this name change has to justify how they fit into the, you know, how they, why a name change adheres to the distinct social, historical, geographic, or cultural characteristics or qualities? I think that if you're going to request that a street name be changed, that you should both have to justify why the current name should be removed, and it no longer has any value, and why the new name has historical and cultural value in this name change. Otherwise, I think the bar is kind of low, and I don't think we should encourage anyone to just apply, to have a name, a street named after a family member or something, which may be near and dear to them, but may not necessarily have any cultural or historic value to the rest of the community. The, I'm looking at the back too as well, it says, I'm just wondering if all applications that are submitted for a street name change, and I know it doesn't happen often, which begs the question, why is it happening now? But I don't know all the background on that, other than what I read, but do all applications get forwarded to the City Council, or does the Planning Department have discretion in whether or not it even qualifies as something that will be presented to the Council based on the guidelines that we've laid out here? And I'll just point out, and then I'll be quiet for now, there's, I'm looking at the minutes. I'm trying to find it here. I guess when this name change was considered at Council, and I see that, I can't find it now, so in the background section, this is on the staff report, August 20th, 2013, when the initial name change was requested for this street, which I guess has been requested again. It outlines the reasons why the applicant has applied, and it basically states, it's a flagship store, top sales tax, producer in San Gabriel, and the name change would better market and publicize hingwali, which is beneficial to economic development. This, to me, seems like it doesn't adhere to the guidelines we've just laid out. It seems to me to be economic and personal, but in nature, and more motivated by business revenue, not history or culture, so I just point that out because it seems like a slippery slope if we don't have at least some basic guidelines that the Council at least has to reference and go by moving forward. And I'll just say I agree with the HIR Commission's recommendation that a name change should go before them, before it goes before the Council, and that there should be a fee waiver for low-income individuals who want to apply for this fee, so that not only wealthy individuals can engage in this process, if we're going to allow it, and that's all.
Great, thanks, Sean. Matt?
I thought this was very well put together and very well thought out. It does have requirements for substantiation in section four. And my one comment is, continue the continuity of street names, rather than doing it like every block, so that requirement's not in here, or that stipulation's not in there, and I think that would be an important addition. That's all.
Okay. Okay, having missed the September meeting when this was gone through in depth, I had to kind of chew into it, and this is a well-put-together report. I agree with everything that the commissioners have stated tonight, and I also agree with most of the guidelines that are put together in the report. So, obviously, this isn't the first time that this has come before us, so I believe some of the feedback has already been digested. Aldo, is that correct? From the first meeting?
That is correct, Chair.
Okay. So, if you can take the comments that were made tonight, and along with the two other commissions that have weighed in on this, I'd like to see it move forward.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the comments. I will put all the comments together and approach the City Council with the guidelines to include all comments, and we'll await direction of the Council.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, item A is, let's see, planning case number CUP 19-008 for a conditional use permit at 1726 South Delmar Avenue, units A and B. Applicant is Hong Vo, Coffey Han Hoa. And Marlon, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. If we could have the PowerPoint pulled up, please? Good evening, Commissioners. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit for the operation of a game arcade as defined by the San Gabriel Municipal Code located at 1726 South Delmar Avenue, Suites A and B, planning case number CUP 19-08. The project is located with an existing coffee shop named Coffey Han Hoa, located on the east side of Delmar Avenue between Valley Boulevard and Dewey Avenue, as can be seen on the aerial map provided here. The subject property is owned CC/T for commercial center and is located within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area. The San Gabriel Municipal Code allows businesses to operate up to three gaming machines by right. Operation of additional machines requires a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit for the operation of a game arcade with eight machines was previously granted by the Planning Commission in March 2012. A history of the business is provided on the next slide. I'll just go through some of these key points briefly here. In September 2006, Coffey Han Hoa began operating as a coffee shop at its current location, serving snacks, coffee, and other non-alcoholic beverages under the original ownership. In September of 2010, the city's Neighborhood Improvement Services, or NIS, Division, received a complaint citing excessive window coverage. NIS staff visited the site and issued a notice for the operation of 15 gaming machines without prior approval, and is informed that a CUP would be required to continue operation of gaming machines. In March of 2012, the City of San Gabriel Planning Commission granted an approval for the eight gaming machines with added conditions. The Planning Commission staff report and conditions of approval have been provided as attachment B to your staff report. In May 2015, the current business owner and applicant, the owner Hong Vo, obtained a business license to continue operation of Coffey Han Hoa. And in April 2019, NIS officers visited the business and noted code violations, including 14 gaming machines, indoor smoking, and unpermitted electrical work. The business owner was informed that the violations would have to be corrected, and the CUP would have to be amended to include the additional machines. In July of 2019, the applicant filed an application requesting an amendment to the existing CUP to increase the number of game machines to a total of 16. In January of 2020, planning and NIS staff met with the business owner to inform the applicant that the CUP had expired per section 116.029K of the San Gabriel Municipal Code, which limits the number of years for a game arcade to two years. The business owner is informed that staff will not support the applicant's request due to repeated violations. The applicant then states that they will be withdrawing the application, and staff gives the business owner 30 days to remove the machines, exceeding the three that have been previously allowed. In February and March of 2020, NIS officers conduct a visit to the location and find nine machines in operation. San Gabriel PD officer also observes window covering, shades, and a lack of operational surveillance equipment. In December 2020, the NIS Division issues a notice of violation noting a total of 15 game machines, lack of visibility into the interior of the businesses, or into the business, excuse me, extended hours of operation, smoking inside the business, and conducting business without a business license. In January of 2021, the NIS officer conducted a follow-up investigation and notes that the tint on the window had been removed and only three machines are remaining. In January and April, through April of 2022, staff contacted the applicant and the representative requesting whether they desire to pursue the application. The applicant is also informed that if they do decide to pursue, that supplemental application materials will be required, and the application will have to be modified, requesting a new conditional use permit as the previous one was no longer active. In August of 2022, NIS and City of San Gabriel Police Officers again visited the site and observed further violations, including gaming machines exceeding the three allowed by right, indoor smoking and gambling. Additionally, the windows were obscured by excessive signage, window shades, and a metal security gate. The business owner was informed that they would have to correct all violations and proceed with their CUP applications to operate more than three gaming machines. The game machines themselves in question are the Aurora WS touchscreen countertop machines, which feature over 150 touchscreen and joystick games, including strategy, puzzle, trivia, and sports games. The machines can be operated by bills, coins, and credit cards with readers located directly on the machines. Credits are not accumulated on the machines, and the machines themselves do not feature gambling capabilities. Specifications for the game machines have been provided as attachment D to your staff report. The San Gabriel Municipal Code has specific requirements for the operation of a game arcade and defines a game arcade as the following: any business location in which there are more than three coin or token-operated amusement devices, or games of skill and science, or any combination thereof, available for use by members of the public and/or business invitees, but shall not include any business location where the floor area devoted to such games is not in excess of 5% of the net floor area occupied by such business, and where the games are conducted in the same room or rooms as the principal business and are not operated in a separate room or partitioned area and does not exceed 10 games. Additional code requirements include the following: machines shall not be located closer than 12 inches from any wall separating the arcade from adjacent building; aisles between rows of gaming machines shall be no less than eight feet in width; maximum of one machine per 40 square feet of gross floor area of game arcade; a minimum of two toilets and lavatory facilities accessible to customers, employees, and business invitees shall be provided; visibility from the outside of the building into all portions of the interior through unobstructed windows; adequately lit entrances and interior areas; and that no person under the age of 18 shall be present during regular school hours; and finally, that one attendant on duty shall be present, subject to San Gabriel PD approval. The floor plan shown here provides a layout of the coffee shop with adequate distance separation, as well as toilets and lavatories. The site itself is accessed by a 20-foot-wide driveway from Delmar Avenue. According to the previous staff report, Coffey Han Hoa began operating at a time when coffee shops were classified as retail-type uses, with parking being calculated at one space per 375 square feet for a total of five required spaces. The operation of a game arcade would require the business to provide additional parking at a ratio of one space per 150 square feet of area to be occupied for the game arcade. In this case, one additional space would be required for the total arcade area. The table shown here provides parking calculations for the other attendant spaces located on the subject property. With the rest of the businesses located on the subject property, the site would require a total of 18 spaces. The site plan shown on the previous slide only identifies a portion of the property and 12 parking spaces. This site plan has been provided here for reference only, shows the entire property and parking spaces in excess of the required 18. When reviewing the request, the planning staff contacted San Gabriel Police Department to obtain a history and background information on the business. San Gabriel PD officers gave a brief overview of multiple calls for service at the location dating back to 2010. On multiple occasions, officers observed smoking indoors, fighting, gambling amongst patrons, improper employee work attire, gang activity, and having the business appear to be closed from the street with only the rear entrance being accessible. Staff also reviewed the request for consistency with the San Gabriel general plan and found it to be inconsistent with economical 4.1 and public it to be inconsistent with economical 4.1 and public environmental safety goal 5.5 for creating a vibrant business community and reducing crime, respectively. Additionally, staff found the business to be inconsistent with Sustainable Land Use Policy 2.1 of the Valley Boulevard specific plan to sustain and enhance commercial centers that provide for the needs of local residents and visitors from the region. The proposed project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exempt per Guidelines 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. The proposed, excuse me, on November 2nd, a notice regarding the public hearing for this project was mailed to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the project site, posted on the project site, and published in the November 2nd edition of the San Gabriel Sun. Additionally, the meeting agenda was also posted at City Hall and on the city's website. The San Gabriel Municipal Code states the following findings shall be made for the granting or denial of conditional use permit: that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan; that the site is adequate in size, shape, topography, and location to accommodate the proposed use; that there will be adequate street access to and from the site for the proposed use; and that the proposed use will not create hazardous traffic conditions; that the proposed use is compatible with surrounding properties and uses; and that the proposed use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Staff is unable to make findings 1, 4, and 5 of the required findings for granting a conditional use permit. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel denying planning case number CUP 19-008 for a conditional use permit for the operation of eight arcade game machines within an existing coffee shop at 1626 South Delmar Avenue. That concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for any questions.
All right, thanks, Marlon. Commissioners, any comments, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Jer.
Obviously, the applicant paid a fee for the for the process, this process.
Correct.
At what point did you tell him that the recommendation would be for denial?
This case has gone through, I know the third planner working on this case, so the previous planner actually informed them in, I believe, in early 2020. January 2020 is when they were informed. If had they withdrawn their application at that point, they could have requested a refund, a partial refund for the work that hadn't been completed, including the public hearing portion of the of their request.
But they knew going forward today that the recommendation was for denial?
Yes, they were informed last week that the recommendation, once again, that the recommendation would be to deny.
And is the applicant here?
The applicant is present.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Just for clarification, this application is for the gaming machines, or is it for overall operation of the facility? Or is it, means is there a separation between the coffee shop and the?
It would be just for the additional five game arcades, or, excuse me, game machines. If the application were to be denied, the applicant would still be able to operate the coffee shop and the three machines allowed to them by right.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I'm gonna open up, thank you, Marlon.
Sure.
Don't go far. I'm gonna open up the public comment, and let's start with the applicant. Would you like to come forward? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
My name is Jennifer. I'm the owner's daughter. She has stepped out with my son. Well, I want to speak in regards to this game. It's just for the arcade game. I want to give a, sorry, kind of shaking, I'm not very good with presenting. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Just relax. It's all fine.
It's because this this gaming condition machine is very important to my mom's business. Just to give you a little background, my mom came here when she was 18, from Vietnam. She came with a little daughter with my father. By 26, she had five of us. And all she knew was to sew at home, and my father was a mechanic at home. Growing up, it was kind of hard. Times were rough, and, you know, my dad was very abusive to my mom, and it's very years and years of it before my mom found courage to leave. And she had nothing but five of us. So she decided to leave sewing because it wasn't enough to support us. She found a coffee shop that kind of offered her a job because they needed help, and she did that for, I will say, about 10 to 15 years, and she was there from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 at night. So I barely got to see her when I was growing up. She saved enough and had this business, and that's all she knows. She knows is to work hard and maintain the coffee shop. And with the gaming machine, it's not determining our store or her business, but it does help her business because that's what attracts her customer to the business, because they come and drink their coffee, and the game machine is just an entertainment for them to stay there for a duration of the time. A lot of the citation that I have seen here, I'm just aware of this now. She has made a lot of corrections to their store, and she has also kind of came up to standards with our business hours because pandemic had hit us really hard. We lost 50% of our customers due to them passing away or just not coming back. And then with the recent years, with improving our city, with changing the streets, cleaning the streets, had hit us hard also because people thought we were closed, so people were not coming back. And we generally had closed our business hours for three months when they were telling us that we, our business license had expired, because during that time was pandemic time, when we were unable to get a hold of somebody at the City Hall. And then we had spoken to a lot of the staff member in regards to getting her permit back. I do take taking responsibility that there was a lack of communication on our end in regards to what was going on. There was too many people helping the situation that I was not getting a lot of information, or the other person wasn't getting the information. So, and then with the staff, the city staff, and them calling the San Gabriel PD to come to our facility, our business, last month had hit us even harder because now we have three machines, and people just don't want to come back because they're saying that there's nothing at our business that they would want to come back for. So that's a little short end of our story, and I'm just hoping that we can get this kind of looked at again. And yeah, I don't know if there's any other questions that I can answer you guys.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah. It sounds like if you're saying people don't come for the machines, or they're not coming for the machines anymore. You've had these situations where, as was discussed by the staff, where there were excessive number of machines, and there were smoking in there, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So if you were allowed to have three machines, or you were allowed to have eight machines, just for discussion purposes. You're not, you don't make it sound like the machines make any or any incentive to bring people in. Whether you have three or more, it doesn't sound like they make a difference to you, to the business.
It does in regards to that, because our customer comes, they order our drinks, and then for them to sit a while at our business, they can order more because they're there longer because they're playing the games. So with that being said, that was just a little another attraction to our store for them to stay longer, and then that increases our revenue for beverages.
Will three machines do that?
It has not. It has dramatically with our revenue. We have lost about, I will say, 60% of our revenue for it, from it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, you can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak on this issue or item? No? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment period. Oh, I'm sorry, we had one.
We received one.
Okay, this was a letter or email that came in? Okay, why don't you go ahead with that then? Thank you.
So there's a letter that was sent by Mr. George Bronstein. He's the attorney of the applicant.
Okay.
And he writes, Dear Mr. Cervantes, I represent Hong Vo, the owner of Han Hoa Coffee House. My client is a single mother of five and was a refugee from Vietnam. My client put her entire life savings into the Han Hoa Coffee House, spending over $100,000 to remodel the coffee house. The COVID-19 pandemic closed all businesses and destroyed my client's livelihood. Also, the repaving of Delmar in front of my client's business also keeps customers away and greatly reduces any foot traffic. Arcade games are necessary to attract clients. My client has always counted on the ability to have at least eight Aurora arcade machines present in order to attract customers for the coffee house. Without the draw of the Merit MegaTouch Aurora arcade game machines, it would be impossible to attract customers. These are games of skill, not gambling machines. Although the city's report states that gambling has taken place on the arcade games at Han Hoa, this is not true. Gambling is illegal, and if the authorities have proof of gambling, they have never made an arrest or lodged a criminal complaint. My client has been in the area for six years and has a loyal clientele. In 2019, they requested licensing for eight MegaTouch Aurora arcade game machines. These are not gambling machines, but skill arcade games available on eBay. There are YouTube videos for children on the internet who are gamers. No gambling takes place on these arcade machines. Cafe Han Hoa struggles to be an anchor for the community and a gathering place. The placement of the arcade machines adds entertainment value to the coffee house and allows my client to stay in business. Very truly yours, George Bronstein.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'm gonna close that portion and open this up for Commissioner discussion. Boy, my first read on this one is, you know, we're going all the way back to 2006 here, and when the coffee shop opened, and it's been pretty much a steady diet of you know, just, just, I hate to say it, but not being a good neighbor. You know, we have requirements for businesses to be able to run the business, and a CUP for gaming is one of them. And you seem to have this one backwards. You know, instead of getting the approval and then the machines, we brought in the machines and refused to remove them. And it just goes on and on. I mean, it's year after year after year, and every time the city goes in to inspect, they find something the same that hasn't been corrected, they find something new, they find patrons smoking, you know, just something every time. So back to my original thought about being a good neighbor, I'm not seeing it here. So anyway, that's where I'm coming down. Jerry?
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to the owner's plight, but I have some knowledge about what code enforcement does, and the number of times they've visited by themselves and with the police department and found violations is concerning. It's as you said, as you said, Chair, it's sort of backwards. Putting in the machines and then sort of asking for forgiveness versus getting the permit first and then putting in the machines. I am sympathetic to struggling businesses, but this list of violations is just excessive. It's the only word that comes, as I read the staff reports, it's the words that came to mind. There were, there were opportunities to conform and to get the CUP, and the CUP's happening now. It's difficult to to go against what staff's recommending in this case. It's very difficult. It's tough for the business, but it's, you know, the the number of times code enforcement visits is, you know, you've been on the commission a long time. This is the most I've ever seen of this.
Yeah, same here.
So it's just tough.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Nug?
I'm in concurrence with my fellow commissioners. There's a lot of violations that occurred, especially in the last four years. Means in a year, you get two to three. Means there's always opportunities to correct, maybe some remedies towards, you know, understanding what the violation is. If there's a communication issue, there's always, the staff is always there to explain, I think, you know. But it seems like it's being repeated over and over. I'll be honest, I drove by this past weekend, and I thought it was actually closed because of the metal gates that are in front of the glass. But looking forward, if this is denied, does the applicant have an opportunity to come back and reapply? And if so, I guess there should be a consider for a remedy to show, can there be a showing from a good faith effort from the business end to be able to say that, hey, we understand these violations, we've taken the remedy towards it? Is there a way to get a provisional permit in the future? But I agree, at this time, I'm leaning towards what staff said, but again, I want to try to look forward to the future and see if there's a way to remedy this issue, and so, you know, applicant has something to work towards and look forward towards, too. I don't know, Marlon, if you could answer that?
Yeah, so prior to that, their course of action would be to file an appeal. There is a 10-day appeal period following action taken by this commission tonight, and to have that heard by the City Council. Following that, there's nothing stopping them from reapplying from a conditional use permit and attempting to show that they have corrected any violations and are taking preventative measures to further address them in the future.
Thank you, Marlon. I think that's, from my perspective at least, giving the business owner opportunity to see what their options are and how to be able to remedy a solution, a situation, and provide a solution towards this situation. Thank you.
True.
Matt?
I read the code and read the project history here, and I've heard your story, and I sympathize with you. It's a painful story, and COVID has been very devastating to a lot of businesses over over the last several years. And what I, as I look at this project history, I see a coffee shop that got started in two thousand and six. And then they put in gaming machines, right, to keep people in the coffee shop with a pastime so that they keep ordering coffee, right? Stay in the shop, which makes sense. Probably unaware that there is a code that, that governs gaming and arcades and that kind of stuff. So then you get a violation. And then in two thousand and eleven, uh, you apply for a CUP. And it takes almost a year, over a year, in fact, to obtain the CUP. So you get the CUP in two thousand and twelve. Everything seems to be fine. However, there is a clause in the code that these, uh, the CUPs expire in two years. If it takes almost a year to get the CUP, you're almost like forced to get a new CUP within six months after you've gotten the first CUP. So that code seems to be pretty, um, onerous, in my opinion, in order to, to, you know, apply for another CUP within two years. Your, 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 that whole process is very time-consuming. So in any case-
Excuse, excuse me. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the clock starts ticking, um, once you have the CUP, correct?
That's correct. So they, so, so they got the CUP in two thousand and twelve.
Right.
Right? But it took them fourteen months to get the original CUP. So they would have to apply for another CUP pretty quickly based on their past experience. You know, within eight months. So they didn't do that because they were probably unaware of the code that says, you know, the CUP expires in two years. I, I doubt your mom is aware of the arcade gaming code. So anyway, um, then, nothing happens until two thousand and nineteen, so seven years go by. And then in two thousand and nineteen, we have all of these violations piling up. And, uh, they are all, uh, during COVID. You know, of the sixteen, uh, entries here, you know, all but four are during COVID. So the, all these things happened in the last, uh, couple of years, um, during COVID. And in January twenty twenty, they're notified that the CUP has expired. So they, and two of these things were actually a request to get, you know, additional gaming machines that were never followed through with. And that, that's gotta be hard for a business owner to respond to demand when people are asking for more gaming machines. You can't respond to demand unless you get a new CUP. That's gotta be difficult to be responsive to your, to your clientele. So I'm just trying to fill out, that's what I'm reading when I read this narrative, is that, um, you know, here's a young lady who, you know, started a, a coffee shop trying to help her kids. And she is really out of her depth when it comes to dealing with the codes, right? She just knows how to make coffee. And she knows she can keep people in the shop with a video game, right? So, um, but the code is what the code is. I mean, planning is perfectly accurate, saying that this code is violated. And, uh, you know, it did expire in two years. And, and so they're just following the code that they're tasked with enforcing. So it's no fault of planning, but it's a, it's a pretty heavy code, right? Because you gotta get a CUP and that tells you exactly how many machines you can have. And it's only good for two years. You know, that, it makes it difficult to run a business, an arcade business anyway, if you can't re- respond to client need.
Oh, you can come up and speak into the microphone.
That's all I had to say.
Thanks, Matt.
As mentioned earlier, um, I think Marlin had brought it up that my mom only took ownership over in, um, I believe in May of two thousand and fifteen. So whatever had happened prior, I wasn't aware of it until today, actually, when I was reading that report. And you guys brought it up that, um, my mom had obtained the business in two thousand and six, which is not correct. It, we had just took over the ownership.
There was a prior owner then?
Correct.
Okay, we were not aware of that.
It was mentioned very vaguely, but it was not, um, brought up that we fully took over or made a big deal that we had took over in two thousand and fifteen. So this is why, this is my first time that I didn't know that the owner was going backwards in regards to her permit, her conditional permit. So this is our first time of actually applying for the conditional permit.
Because the first, I'm sorry, because the first permit was applied for by the prior owner, correct?
Correct.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think COVID hit in March of two thousand and nineteen.
No, uh, twenty. Twenty twenty. Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, so I, um, I'm kind of, uh, I'm not sure what to do on this one. I don't, I don't want, I, I, first of all, I, um, I didn't realize this until, uh, Commissioner Clapwater pointed it out that, uh, I'm sorry, Crapman pointed it out that most of the violations occurred during the pandemic. Which leads me to believe there's a strong likelihood that it was, uh, because they, uh, they needed the income and took the risk or they simply did not know the code. The, I, I mean, that said, I, I will say that, that the list of violations is, is, um, it's, it's quite a lot. The ones that concern me are the fighting and gang-related activity, you know, and smoking as well. But I, so what I, what I wanna, um, ask maybe the commission to consider, or first, maybe I should ask staff if this is even possible, somewhat, um, uh, in, in line with what, uh, um, Commissioner, um, Nug, uh, uh, mentioned, rather than have a, deny the permit and have a trial period where they have no violations, is it possible to put conditions of approval of a trial period where, the, 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 the permit is approved, but if there are any violations, um, of any kind within a certain, you know, six to twelve months, then, then they lose that CUP? Somewhat of as an incentive to perhaps, um, cease the continue, you know, kind of this, this chain of violations. And now, I don't know if, 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 if customers have stopped coming necessarily because it's because of the machines or if they have to stop smoking and gang patronizing, will they stop coming because of that? I'm willing to give them an opportunity, but I'm, I, I will say, um, violations are, are, are a lot. And I think that it might be a short leash if, if, um, conditions of approval such as that are, are, if my fellow commissioners would consider that. I'll, I will throw that out there, um, for consideration. I don't want to, um, harm, uh, you know, any family or business. At the same time, I don't want, um, I don't want these violations to continue. Also, have we received any complaints from any of the, the neighboring businesses regarding the, the establishment? Or is it just, um, violations that were found, um, when, when it was inspected?
Uh, NIS visits are, are typically complaint-based. Uh, however, the complaints are anonymous, so there's no way to say who the complaints came from.
I, I, I just, yeah, I'm, I didn't hear from any of the neighboring businesses in comment. If, 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 that doesn't mean there aren't any concerns with the neighboring businesses. I just think I'd be less inclined to, to, to try and find a solution if the neighboring businesses were adamant that this was harming their businesses or, or somehow detrimental to them. So, um, I'll, I'll leave that, I'll put that out there and, um, see if that's, there's a possibility of conditions of approval that, um, the CUP is granted. But if there are any violations within a certain time period moving forward, then that CUP is, is automatically revoked.
So I might, I might be able to address that part for you and maybe even provide some other alternatives that might get you where you wanna be, assuming the commission wants to be. But with respect to, uh, putting in automatic, uh, revocation language into the CUP, I don't think that's gonna be legally supportable. Basically, right now, when you're issuing a CUP, you're giving an entitlement to somebody. And if they breach that CUP in any way, they're entitled to a due process, termination, revocation process and hearing and all of that. So you wouldn't be streamlining the effort to cancel it, grant it and cancel it if that's what you wanted to do. Some alternatives that might get you to a similar, uh, result, uh, or gap. The, the commission could always, um, ask staff to come back with, uh, some middle ground, maybe approve five machines and then come back and later and see what it is and, and give them more as, as they're doing well. That's one way to address it. Another way to address it might be with, um, with the applicant's consent. You could, uh, continue this hearing, uh, to some definite period of time to come back and reconsider it without a new application. Just coming back and seeing how that interim period was, whether that's ninety days or six months. I haven't looked at your code to see if there's a, a period, um, within which the application has to be addressed. But usually with the, the applicant's consent, that's an alternative that might get you down a path as well.
I'll just say, I'd, I'd be willing to consider either of those, um, if the commission is inclined. Also, uh, would be interested to hear from the applicant again about such a, such a potential arrangement, if possible.
Did you wanna come up and, and? Okay. Understand, I understand. Yeah, you know, this is difficult. I'm a, I'm a small business owner myself. And, uh, you know, the last three years, two and a half years have been very difficult. But I also sat on this commission when we approved the, uh, the original CUP. And we went from three machines to eight. And then it kind of fell apart and, um, it, you know, it was, uh, um, you know, one thing after another and this whole thing kind of snowballed. What, I like the idea of the continuance. Because I, that, I think there's a, there's an opportunity here to, um, earn back some trust that has been lost. And, uh, you know, I understand that there's been a change of ownership, but, uh, boy, I'm looking here, there's a lot of violations from nineteen, or two thousand and nineteen on, um, where there's been no remedy. You can't just ignore these things. If you, if you're going to benefit from having a business in the city of San Gabriel, you have to play by the same rules as everybody else. And that, that's kind of it in a nutshell. What would be our, our outer limit on a continuance? Oh, you want me, you want me to keep going? Yeah, the, the-
Not off the top of my head, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, 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 ju- just go ahead. Anag, you wanna?
Clarification, what are the hours of operation for the business now? I, I saw two sets of times. I just wanted to get-
Uh, let me grab mine.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm referencing, uh, attachment C, the business operation plan that was provided by the owner. Uh, the business, or the hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM, and Friday to Saturday, eight AM to ten PM, uh, which is within the, um, what's allowed by the code for, uh, game arcades.
And that has also not been one of the violations, has it?
Uh, I believe there was one at one point previously. I, I'd have to reference that.
Okay, but anyway, those hours seem pretty reasonable.
Yes, uh, I had a follow-up question. I know maybe there's a language barrier. Has the applicant or the city have either side communicated what languages prefer to be able to be able to create that communication? Get rid of that communication barrier?
Uh, staff has not. However, I've been primarily communicating with Jennifer. She has not expressed any, um, difficulty in communicating or, or understanding anything that's been communicated to her. But we do have translation services available if they are requested.
Okay. Question. She said that, that, that her mother's never filed for a CUP. But if you look at the, the, these lists of project history, there was a request in tw- twenty nineteen.
Correct.
So, but at that time, based on what was described, she, the current owner was the owner at that time?
Correct. They took over, uh, this is per, um, business license records. Uh, the, the business was purchased by the current owner in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the application, uh, in some form that we were reviewing tonight was received in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, that application has yet to be heard.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just clarifying that, that this app, this owner has actually made an application before.
That's, that's actually this current application.
Which started in two thousand and nineteen.
Right, as it was originally, uh, filed, it was for, uh, modifying their CUP. At that point in time, the understanding was that that CUP was still active. Uh, they were later informed that that CUP had, uh, been expired and were, and then modified the application requesting a new CUP.
And so what took so long?
Unfortunately, I was not, um, the staff planner assigned to the case at the time, so I'm unable to say.
All right. Interesting. Martin, what, what'd you come up with?
Yeah, your, your code has no specific restrictions on this. So my only concern would be the applicant's due process rights and staff's ability to ma- maintain the calendar. So as long as the applicant, uh, consented to, okay, this is the continuance question. Uh, can, consented to a continuance to a date certain. I think that's perfectly legal. I think it will have to be the applicant that you're gonna wanna hear that from on the record, not necessarily the applicant's daughter in this case. But, um, I, I see no, no restriction in doing that if that's the way you wanna go.
Okay, so my question to the commissioners is, how much time would good faith take? Uh, in this circumstance? You know, the, the, going back to what I was saying before, we started with a CUP. We went from three machines by right to eight under the CUP, which became fifteen. And, you know, here we are. So, um, you know, and then we're, now we're down to three and we've got a, a struggling business. So there's gotta be something there. We also gotta put some teeth into this thing with, with regard to security, managing the clientele, um, you know, onsite smoking, gangs, fighting, you know, none of that is good. Is six months gonna solve that problem? I don't know.
I mean, we approved a CUP, uh, for eight, uh, games already. It just expired, so they're asking for the same thing again.
And it probably wouldn't have been renewed under the circumstances.
Probably. One thing that bothers me is like the visibility thing. Kept coming up again and again and again and again, and that's something that was easily correctable. So, I don't know.
Just to highlight, in case it hasn't, going through anybody's mind, should they consent to any, any continuance and you go down that route, that would not- consent to any, any continuance and you go down that route, that would not be an appealable decision.
To appeal that to-
It wouldn't be, that decision to continue wouldn't be appealable.
So clarifying question, so I, just hypothetically, if a continuance is granted, I understand we have to try and figure out how much, much time, but a continuance is granted means then that only while that continuance is ongoing, only the three machines are in operation then until they come back and we reconsider at the continuance? And then was there another option where, I, I'm just throwing this out there because it seems like they're not making, according to the applicant who was up here, they're, now they're not making enough money if we make a condition that they can have five. Is that, was that part of the, or was that then due process?
So the only way you could give them five would be to direct staff to come back with a resolution approving the CUP, but with the condition that it's only five.
Okay.
And that would be appealable by any party.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm open to thoughts with, from the commissioners. I, I would, I personally would like to grant a continuance if they can show in good faith, if we can come up with a time that they, like you said, with the windows, that issue's taken care of, there are no more violations with smoking, with fighting, or, or, or anything like that, than we reconsider. That said, I, I, I'm, I agree, it's something, it has to have teeth, but I'm willing to consider that, but I, I will also respect your opinion, so I'll leave it at that.
I'm reading the recommended conditions of approval here, and there are some teeth in here. Item number four basically requires that the whole place be inspected prior to any There's also a six-month review, item number eight, there's a six-month review of the CUP compliance. There's also a requirement for an electrical permit, that's item number 13. There's also item number 11, inspections by city staff on a quarterly basis during the first year of approval of the CUP. So there's a lot of enforcement mechanisms here, and it's requiring video, which I think is going to help with, you know, the gang behavior and that kind of stuff. If you're on camera, you're not going to act that way. So, and it would also verify whether or not gambling is going on or not.
I, I would, and that's a, I'm sorry, I just, yeah, I, I think, well, I saw one of the conditions in there that not only do they have to have video recordings, they have to provide those recordings to the police upon request, was part of the conditions, but also, I would also be open to also including the possibility of surprise inspections, you know, to occur at any time, just to ensure that, that everything is being adhered to. I agree, they've had opportunities, and, and I don't think this is acceptable. I'm just hoping to find a way to try and resolve this and give it one more chance.
Well, one thought, if you're going to give a continuance to a date certain, and you want to see that they're following the rules, the, the, the period that comes to my mind is six months.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, Jerry.
That if, if, and during that time, there should be su- surprise inspections, absolutely. We should have a full report so that if, if everything is above board for six months, it becomes a, a much different appearance from that standpoint, from the ability then to say, you know, let's find a way to make it work.
It's a big difference from where we are today.
Yes.
Because we're, it sounds to me like we still have violations out there.
Six months of, of a clean operation, bringing it back. For me, anyway, make, would, just as one of five of us, would make a big difference.
Honestly, Jerry, I don't think we can go out much further than that.
No, I don't either.
I don't think it would be fair to the applicant. I don't think it'd be fair to the city. I mean, you know, so many things are at play here. We want to keep small businesses working and, and serving the community, you know, all that, but then you also have to follow the rules. So I'm going to go ahead and, 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 I'm not sure what the mechanism is for doing this, but-
Make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to move to continue this for six months, and we are-
I would consult with the applicant before we, you moved forward with that, though.
Okay, but the applicant's not here.
Oh, I'll go get- I thought the applicant was here, just in the other room. The other alternative, if, if the applicant's not able to communicate at this point in time, you could continue this just to the next meeting.
For 30 days, okay.
And in the meantime, the applicant can provide that agreement to, to hold the application in abeyance for six months. And if they don't provide that during that period of time, then when you come back here in 30 days, then you can take action on staff's recommendation. If they do submit that agreement to do so, then it simply comes off calendar and gets put to the new date.
Okay, let, let, let's go 30 days then.
So you can make-
I, I will clarify that the applicant is in the, in the lobby currently.
Okay, yeah.
Do you follow what we're talking about up here? You can communicate to her, does she speak English, or?
Very little. I would have to translate with her, but I don't know when you're mobile, it'll be enough.
So what they're considering doing is kind of giving a trial period of six months to try to not have any code violations?
And, and clean up what the condition as they are now.
Right. And then come back in six months, and if everything is, is good with everything, they'll reconsider because they, approving it at that time.
Okay, I understand.
See if she's in agreement to that. If not, her alternative is she can just move forward with the hearing today as it is, knowing that this body may deny it as it stands right now today, in which case she'd have the right to appeal that to the city council.
Yes, sir.
So those are kind of the two choices.
Okay. Can I go ahead and do that with her?
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, the, the applicant has been provided with the full staff report, correct?
They have. I believe your question was regarding specifically to the conditions of approval?
Yes, has the applicant seen the recommended conditions of approval at the back here?
So they were provided a copy of the report. This, the conditions of approval you're referencing are actually an attachment to the staff report from 2012. They're not the recommended conditions of approval for this application.
So we would have an updated set of recommendations?
Correct. If, if you were to decide to approve, a new list would have to be drafted. It can be similar to the one that was approved in 2012, but it would have to be a new one.
If we decided to continue this to, to next month, those would be, would be provided, then?
They can be, yes.
Okay. Actually, we're looking at, at, at six, six months, but, yeah, that, it would be, it would, if they can get up to code, and stay up to code, then we would have a, a more or less clean slate to, to be able to, to look at this.
Hey, I had two questions real quick.
Sure.
The survey, surveillance footage, surveillance at the, at this location, is it still active? Is it working?
The last police department visit was stated that it was no, it was not active, no.
Okay, and this, my second question is, they said they did some electric, electrical upgrades that didn't, were not permitted?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been remedied, or is that still outstanding?
Um, I don't believe there was any building permits pulled, no.
Okay.
That, that, yeah, so just, that leads me to a couple of questions as well. If, if the applicant, if it is denied today, the CUP, does the applicant then have the opportunity to immediately reapply, or do the, is there a waiting period? I'm just trying to figure out when-
If denied, they can appeal to the city council.
Appeal to the city council, but then if the city council-
Denies.
Denies it, is there a waiting, I'm just trying to figure out if the six months to them is a benefit, or if they're just like, well, if it's going to get denied, we'll deny it, move on.
If it's the fees.
Fees, okay.
That's what would probably come into play the most. If they reapply, they'd have to start all over with the fees.
Okay, that makes sense, and then-
Be a whole new review.
Okay. And then to Commissioner, uh, I can, some, one of, one of the commissioners made the point that, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who, that, the, right now, there's a list of conditions of approval, and there appears to be some violations. If we do a continuance, can we let them know that even though, I, I think you implied that we can't impose upon these conditions because we're not voting on them, but if they don't address these things, that will clearly be taken into account when this comes back to us, and if they do have more violations over this, this trial period, we will definitely take that into account so that they know it behooves them to address all of these and start initiating these conditions of approval.
Yeah, my impression is if they had followed this list from the 2012 CUP, they wouldn't be in trouble.
Correct. Right. But to Sean, to Sean's point, they can only act on what they have in their hands. So, and, and if, if this can, a list of conditions went to a prior owner, um, right, so we want to make sure that staff gives them the direction that they need to be able to get into compliance for the six-month period. Is, is that possible?
Would that be to provide them with the previous conditions of approval?
Yes, that's my understanding.
That would be fine, yeah.
Would it, would it also include any of the violations that have been described? Again, they do fall back to the recommendations, but kind of emphasizing these are your current violations as well?
Yes, yes.
Just trying to improve the communication so that they know what they need to do.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I would really, really stress security. You know, that, that's one thing that is just not acceptable, to, to, to have fighting breaking out. So, you want to come up? Thanks, Marlin.
Sure.
So this is, this is my mom, Hong Lo.
Nice to meet you. So were you able to have a discussion with her?
I was able to, and she's, she's willing to do the six months, whatever it takes to kind of give us just the one or extra machines that we can get.
Okay, okay.
I think, though, I wanted to clarify, we, we, the continuance won't allow you to have more than the three machines, but, but it will allow you to get up to code, show that no more violate, that you're not engaged, there won't be any more violations, and then when it comes back to us, then I think we, you've showed some good faith in, in, in doing all of this, and that you, you'll be diligent in not allowing these violations to continue, and then we can reconsider that. So you, you would still only be allowed to do the three machines, does she understand that until-
Sorry, I, I'm sorry, I did understand that. I, I really understand that.
Okay, all right.
Just trust, giving trust back to the city.
Yeah, so no more than three machines until it comes back, and, and if it's approved, then, so.
Yeah, and very important that you get yourself into compliance with the, uh, all the issues. And Marlin and, and, and the people from the city will be communicating with you to let you know what, what, what the violations have been, what needs to be corrected, and then we need to see six months of-
Yes, sir.
Squeaky clean, just no, no police involvement, no calls, no fights.
To be honest, I, I don't know what fight they're talking about. I don't know, maybe it's from our, the previous owner, I'm not too sure.
Okay.
But I will definitely make sure, note of that to my mom, that, you know, these shouldn't be happening. Whatever I saw in the report, bring it up to her attention again, that these were brought up, and that we should not be having that, just to better communication.
And then also the visibility from the front.
Okay.
Got to take care of that.
Okay.
Okay?
There's a list of the conditions of approval from the original CUP.
Okay.
And, and Marlin will get that to you.
Okay.
And you need to go through that and make sure all those boxes are checked.
It, it was just provided to us last week, and I wasn't aware of that until now.
Okay. Very important that you understand that and, and act on it.
Will do.
Yeah, okay. So, um, okay, can we get a six-month? So we're looking at June?
Uh, yes, Chairman, six months from, it's November at the moment, that would take us into May, and that would be May 8th.
Okay. Just because we've got some time for communications, can we push that back one month?
To June?
Yeah.
Then it would be June 12th.
Perfect.
That's the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'm going to move to continue this item for six months to a date certain of June 12th, 2023. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and a vote.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Krappman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mambo, Mamde Perkar?
Yes.
And Chair Cloweter?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five zero, motion carried.
Thank you so much for your guys' time.
Oh, just, thank you. We, we really want to see you succeed, so if you can get to work and get some of these things cleaned up, and then come back and see us, okay? Thank you.
So just to be clear, too, there's, there'll be no necessary additional noticing other than regular Brown Act agenda requirements here, public hearing.
As, 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 as a continuance?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay, um, do we go to B, or do we go?
To C.
Do we go, we jump to C, and it's the Zone Text Amendment? And Sam, this is yours, I believe.
Yes, Jackie.
Yes, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, as stated earlier, item 4C is a Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 22-001, relating to non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. Very briefly, on September 12th of 2022, information and options related to a potential update or amendment to San Gabriel Municipal Code Section 153.421, subsection A, subsection 6, and also 153.421, subsection B and subsection 4, and 153.422, subsection C, subsection 2. And this is all in relations to non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. This was presented to the Planning Commission to provide comments on September 12th. And the intent of that report was to inform the Planning Commission that non-conforming uses and structures will terminate 30 years from the effective date of ordinance number 393-C, uh, the, a point, uh, S in 2023, which is coming up in, in, in a few months, or in, in, in a month. which is coming up in a few months, or in a month. The Commission commented that enforcement may be infeasible due to the number of cases that may potentially arise, and also expressed concerns about the potential financial implications to residential and commercial property owners. The Commission also requested additional information about the history of the ordinance and information from neighboring cities. Both items have been included, either as part of the staff report or as an attachment. So, the slide here provides the two of the code section, essentially showing the proposed strike-through or deletion of the section that specifically states, or the request, or the proposal is to remove the 30-year amateurization period. And this is the third section that was cited. And so, the recommendation simply before the Planning Commission this evening is to recommend approval to the City Council for the proposed amendments, the strike-throughs that were provided in the staff report, also as the exhibit to the resolution to amend Chapter 153 of the zoning code as it relates to non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thanks. Any comments, any questions?
I've been thinking about this one since it came up, and I'm glad that we're considering striking it because I think that's the cleanest correction.
Okay. Okay, public comment? Okay, we're going to open up for public comment. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to this? Or any correspondence?
We didn't receive any.
Not for this one? Okay, all right, we will close the public comment and open it up for discussion. Anog?
I'm going to share my sentiments as my fellow Chair, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm glad to see the 30-year strike. How I understand this is this ordinance had been approved, now it's coming to fruition, and now that, you know, the council needs to make their final recommendations. I had some concerns thinking again about this, you know, is there any state or federal laws or ordinances or regulations or codes that may be in conflict with this? Particularly because a lot of our buildings are aged, also historical in nature. And it would be, it's kind of like, it's kind of confusing at this point. Like, how would you see the mission across? Would that be something that would be considered? Or is that, if it was considered this ordinance, but are there other requirements, like a historical preservation by the state or feds, that over supersedes this ordinance? Again, or even our city buildings. Some of our city buildings are a little older, some are new. Means, where does this all fall? Again, I'm happy to see it being striked. My also, my additional recommendation would be to see if council would be willing to put a moratorium on this, and to get a better understanding, allowing staff more time to do some more research against this ordinance, and see if there is any, if there's no violations in other locations within the state and federal codes, or any other jurisdictions that may be applicable to this, to any of the, you know, non-conforming uses of structures or lots in this city.
So, let me understand. You want to go more in-depth to the individual nonconformance? What are you looking for?
What I'm looking for is more of a consistency, that we're making sure our ordinance doesn't create a violation or go against another ordinance that might be in the books, or any other state or federal codes that might be there. Because a lot of what's being said in this ordinance seems to be also in concurrence in a lot of the California building code, you know. If you have, again, the history was beneficial, and I, and understanding that in 1992, this was brought up, it seems to have occurred after the Landers earthquake, specifically. And there was a lot of concerns that, at that time, you know, we had a, there might have been a lot of damages that were occurring in Mojave Desert area, where that earthquake did occur. And then, again, in 94, when we did have the Northridge, we started to see a lot of bad construction being exposed due to the earthquake. And this would probably have been more emphasizing, like, hey, look at this, we're going to do these changes. But fast forward 30 years later, we see a lot more different codes for housing coming up, like ADU requirements, you know. How does that, means, again, staff indicated that it doesn't violate, but looking at it, like setbacks were talked about in this ordinance. How does that concur with an ADU requirement? Preservation requirements set by the state on construction, how would that affect it? Means, my concern is that because we're being kind of rushed into taking on this ordinance, and making it our code, and that council won't have enough time to understand if there was any other codes or any other ordinances that overlap with it, or also at the same time, you know, go in a different direction, and then you have a conflicting code set out and set in on the books.
So, from staff's standpoint, how do you come down on that?
Chairman and members of the Commission, for clarification, the proposed amendment is the strike-through of the 30-year amateurization period. The ordinance is existing, and no other amendments are proposed to the existing ordinance. If there are construction defects or substandard construction, whether residential or commercial, and that has been something either identified to the building department or something that the building department has proactively seen, then it would be addressed through the route of building and safety codes, potentially fire codes. As to whether or not nonconformities have been a hindrance to ADU applications, that is not something that staff has seen. Applications are definitely possible, considering that ADUs are permitted in the rear yard, and now with the generous four-foot setback, even more so than a standard single-family home setback requirements. But staff has noted the comments provided by the Vice Chair, and if that is the direction of the Planning Commission, then that is some additional research that staff can do.
I think what staff is proposing here is simply striking the 30-year.
That's how I see it.
Right, and it doesn't really have to do with the whole rest of the code, the governing codes and things like that. Those are still in place. So, it's just the 30-year deadline, so we can cross that out. I think it's the cleanest, neatest way to handle it, and the rest of the building code stays in place.
Go ahead, Sean.
First, to address Anog's question, this is a question for the city attorney. If anything in the current code, after we strike the couple of clauses there, the 30-year clause, if, am I correct in assuming that if anything else is, at any point, comes in conflict with state law or any other law on the books, then that's something that would be not, we just wouldn't enforce that part, or it would be addressed at that time, right?
Yeah, but you could say that, but I would say even more definitively, I don't think there's anything in what's proposed that's contrary to state or federal law. In fact, you're actually going the other way. This part that you're striking out is the part that's subject to more challenge than being with it because it creates a restriction on people's use of the property, whereas the removal of it allows them to maintain that non-conforming use unless they lose it for other reasons, destruction, but that has nothing to do with the 30-year period. So, removing the amortization is actually more legally sound than leaving it. More subject to challenge.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank staff for providing the additional history and information on this. I did request that, I believe, last time. I thought it was helpful, and I do support what staff's recommending here.
Jerry?
You know, the most interesting thing, besides the chart of what other cities are doing, I was looking at number eight under 153-421A. Says basically, if a non-conforming use is involuntarily destroyed, causing involuntary discontinuance, that the non-conforming use can continue if it's reestablished within 120 days of all work being done. That's pretty fair. That seems pretty fair to me. I mean, it gives a, it gives a non-conforming user as much flexibility as can be allowed. So, I think overall, this is, this is a good change, taking out number six, and otherwise trying to deal with, you know, non-conforming uses in these other ways, not allowing additions or changes to, or intensification of those kinds of uses. That makes sense as well. So, I think this is something that I feel comfortable recommending to the city council.
Okay. I tend to agree, and I think it helps having that clarified, that we're really looking at the time here. And I wasn't here when this came before us the first time, so this has been very interesting. So, this is a new report that we've put together for the surrounding cities. You know, we keep coming back to, San Gabriel is really old. And, you know, sometimes you just have to keep that in mind. But anyway, can we entertain a motion here?
I move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Second, anybody?
I'll second it.
Okay, take a vote.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krappman?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mamdeh Perkar?
Yes.
And Chair Clowitter?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero, motion carried.
Okay, well done, thank you. All right, we're going to go back to B. 1381 East Las Tunas Drive, units six and seven. This is planning case number CUP 22-002 for a conditional use permit. Applicant is ZG He, and Anthony, as our staff.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And at this time, we were notified by-
Excuse me a moment, please. Oh, you were going to do that, okay. I thought you were going to your staff report.
It's ahead of you.
Forgive me, okay.
Yes, so thank you. Vice Chair Mamdeh Perkar let us know that he would have to recuse himself because he owns property within the 500-foot radius of this project.
Yes, yes, I do, thank you. Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, everyone. I will see you next month to say hi.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
You, too.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anog.
Okay, so, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The last public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow the proposed use of a board game business located at the address 1381 East Las Tunas Drive, units number six and seven. This is planning case number CUP 22-002. Okay. The subject property is located on the corner of North Muscatel Avenue and East Las Tunas Drive. The property is located within a commercial plaza on that northwest corner. The commercial plaza was constructed in 1980 and currently consists of eight separate tenant spaces, however, some of which have had multiple unit spaces combined for their business. The shopping center is currently occupied by a restaurant, a pet groomer, personal service businesses such as salons and nail businesses, as well as just getting approval earlier this year on February 14 for a proposed escape room business to occupy units eight through 10. The escape room business has already pulled their building permits and is currently under construction. The property is located in the C1 Commercial Retail Zone and has a general plan, land use designation of general commercial. So, for the business plan, then the applicant has brought examples of this and kind of elaborated on it a little bit more. But what the applicant is proposing is to have interactive board game business where guests will be given scripts, and will have to play along with the employee or the host as they guide them through the game. They propose to be open seven days a week. However, the applicant has said that they may close one day during the week to allow for the employees to have a day off. They just haven't, they haven't set that date yet. I think the applicant has said that they're looking at either Tuesday or Wednesday during the week to close. Hours of operation would be 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and approximately, they look to rent out the space or the rooms for about one to two hours. That would allow them enough time to guide the guests through the game and allow them to play and beat the game. This next slide shows the proposed floor plan. It shows that they are proposing four of these prop game rooms, ranging in size. The sizes range from, sorry, 132 square feet to 318 square feet. There is a lobby area and a hallway that would connect the four rooms, as well as a restaurant for the patrons and the employees to use. The image to the right shows an example of some of the scripts that will be given to the guests that look to play these games. And on the next slide are just some of the images that the applicant has presented to staff to kind of show an idea of what these games can look like. This isn't, these aren't pictures from the applicant's business, but they said it's just a good example of what the city can expect of what, how business will be conducted here. The project was found to be consistent with the general plan as far as meeting economic goal 4.1, which is to create a vibrant, a vibrant business community. The project was also reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and found to be exempt with SEQA per guideline section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. Noticing was also conducted for this project and was required to have notices sent out to property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the subject site, having a notice posted at the project site, having the notice posted in the issue of the San Gabriel Sun, and also having the agendas posted at the various locations like City Hall, Post Office, and our San Gabriel Public Library. Oh, sorry, and also on the city's website. So, that will conclude staff's presentation at this time. Staff will recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP 22-002 for a conditional use permit at 1381 East Las Tunas Drive, units six and seven, to allow a proposed board game business subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And this will conclude staff's presentation for this item. And this will conclude staff's presentation for this item. Staff is available for any questions that the Commission might have. We do have the applicant here that would like to make a short presentation and is also available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony before we bring up the applicant?
Just want to compliment you, very well presented, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, if the applicant's here, have you come up?
Yeah, so I just bring, so he's bringing two.
Jay, if you could speak into here.
So because he's brand new from here, so I just bring two examples to like, show you guys what kind of board game I'm doing right now. So. Because I am a student right now, and I love playing this game. So each time I want to play this game, I need to drive way a lot of far. So I need to drive to Roland High to play. And I have a lot of friends love playing this game. And before I play this game, we don't know each other. So I play this game can make a lot of new friends from each different city. So that'd be, that's it, I think. So I just bring the new stuff to here. I don't think everyone knows this one, but it's not gamble, nothing is gamble. Thank you.
Excuse me. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I'm just curious.
Yes.
Your proximity to Jefferson Middle School.
Yes.
Makes me, do you have, are there times of the day in which middle schoolers can come and which times they can't come, for example? I mean.
So basically, we will close, actually it's on Tuesday. So that day, we won't open. And because I don't think they will come after school because they maybe have a homework. I don't suggest they come here to play this game after school because it's kind of long time to play it. So it takes one to two hours.
Okay.
What's, what's your age target? What's?
It's between high school and college and some like adult.
Younger adult?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Anybody else?
You've read the requirements in the, the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
And you're okay with those?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jerry. It's Exhibit 1 in the staff report, and it's the recommended conditions of approval. There are 37 of them, and those are kind of the guidelines that you have to follow for your conditional use permit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So make sure you're familiar with those. And that you agree to abide by them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sean?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll point out as well, in the conditions of approval, because there's a lot of, I would encourage you, if you need, if English isn't your first language, you can request a translator and City Hall to help you to make sure you understand all, just know that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wish to speak in the public? Nope, okay, we'll close the public hearing and open this up for Commissioner discussion. Let's start with you, Jer.
Seems like a, we get more, we're getting more and more of these kinds of things where there are alternative escape room, as was discussed, or game thing, game arcade, or whatever. As long as you're comfortable with all of the conditions, then from my standpoint, I wish you a great deal of success. And I would support the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, I think I said this last time because we had another similar business come in for board games, I believe. I play board games with a group of friends quite often. So I see the enjoyment and the camaraderie that can come with that. So I just, I wish you success.
I just echo those comments, wish you luck. There's a, there is a place called Game Empire. It's up in Pasadena on Allen and Colorado. You should study them because they've been around for like 50 years, and they just keep getting bigger.
Okay. All right. Welcome to the world of small business. And hopefully, it grows. Okay.
I move approval of staff's recommendation.
Okay. I'll second that. Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Chair Clowitter?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krappman?
Yes.
And Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And the vote is four zero, motion carry.
Congratulations. Best of luck to you. Okay, do we have any Commissioner items? How about staff?
Well, no updates for this meeting, but likely some updates outlining some potential items that may be coming before the Planning Commission in the upcoming year.
Okay. Just quickly, do you see things picking up at all? I mean, because it's, it's, it's been slow the last few years.
I mean, in terms of business license application, they've been pretty consistent. Also, ADUs, ADU applications are very popular.
A lot of construction out in the neighborhood, yeah.
And anything else to add, Anthony?
The only thing I would add is that a lot of the development on Valley Boulevard, the construction on Valley Boulevard as far as the mixed-use projects, you have 400 to 420 West Valley, you got 860 East Valley, 101 East and 101 West Valley. Of course, Pacific Square is moving forward. Which one am I missing? Self storage is also moving forward. So those bigger projects are moving along. So I think that's going to be a good thing.
And that's taking it all the way up San Gabriel Boulevard then, too. Yeah, it's amazing driving around there.
Right.
That's a lot of construction, a lot of money going on there. All right, let's see, what is our next? We're going to adjourn this meeting to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Monday, December 12th, and that will be here. And we are adjourned.